All right. Candy, when you're coming in, you're ready?
I am ready.
Okay, Dan's ready, all right. Folks, it's five o'clock, we're ready. Let me call the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, February thirteenth, 2023, to order. And Candy, when you are ready, we'll do a roll call.
Beshin.
Here.
Beal.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Van Campen.
Here.
And Wunch.
Here.
Okay. We'll go to three, which is approval of the February sixth, 2023 Village Board meeting minutes. We'll get a motion in a second. I see Phil and Carleen. Anybody have any discussion in those minutes? Yes. See none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post, okay. Four, public appearances, comments, communication. Now we've got A, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Okay. All right. See none, we'll go to five, approval of vouchers in the amount of 557,000. We'll get a motion in a second, we'll get her on the table, Carleen and Jenna. All right, questions for staff and any other vouchers? Mike? No? Okay. Nobody's got anything, okay? All right.
All right. Glish.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
Wunch.
Yes.
Beshin.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Beal.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Six is the consent agenda. We'll consider A through G with the motion in a second, unless anybody has any questions on anything. So, Mike, motion or question?
No, I have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Chief, on the municipal deputization agreement, what does that authorize our officers to do?
Yeah, so it does a better job of outlining it in the agreement than I can probably explain, but I'll summarize. Essentially, any arresting powers. So, a prime example of this would be, the county's tied up with several priority calls and an OWI comes in. So, if they ask for us, we'll go out in mutual aid and we can deal with the OWI and follow it from start to finish because we're deputized, so we can cover their jurisdiction.
Oh, so this is mutual aid?
Yes.
Basically authorizing mutual aid?
Yep.
Got it. Thank you.
But it doesn't have to be just mutual aid. So, another example would be, we're coming back from the jail and we witness a road rage incident. County's not available, or we witnessed it anyway, we could make the stop and deal with it accordingly.
Okay. Thank you.
Carleen?
And that means that you're within your jurisdiction to do any of that, so this would be if it's outside of the Village of Oregon?
Correct, yep. And our officers, to be clear too, though, still follow our policy.
Okay, anybody else? Any questions on any of those? Otherwise, we'll take a motion in a second, okay? Phil and Amanda? Any, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay. Moving along. We are on seven, report of committees. First one up is A, is the Plan Commission. A1 is ordinance number 2301. Ordinance changing the zoning classification of property located at 221 Hayler Court from single-family residential to planned development district for a home occupation use of an acupuncture and wellness clinic. This has come to the Plan Commission twice. First time we approved it and then there was a little clarification and again, that was taken care of at the Plan Commission, so the commission and staff are recommending Do you need to say anything? Okay.
That's, I don't have to.
Okay. You said it. You said it.
That's my policy too, really.
Yeah, I get it. You had to say enough at previous meetings, so. All right, can we get a motion in a second? Let's get it on, all right. Jenna and then Carleen. Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, so I had a constituent on Hayler Court contact me and brought up some issues that I think are valid. I mean, I don't object to the business, the home business at all. It's more of a Public Works issue possibly. There's just a concern that if there's more cars parked down the street, that there are trucks that have a hard time already navigating that cul-de-sac, you know, trash and recycle and snowplows and the whole thing. And so, I just wanted to make sure that those issues get addressed and that's not something that you would necessarily address. I'm just saying, you know, Public Works, like if there's something we can do to make that easier, especially if there's going to be any additional cars there.
So, Amanda, I think it came up at the Plan Commission, Jeff was there, and I think his overall feeling was, he did not see any of that as an issue for her.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a related issue, I guess, that, you know, I think should be addressed. On a larger scale, I was just going to say, it's unfortunate that you would have to operate a business out of your home, that you feel the necessity to do it. In general, you know, for businesses like this, I would hope that in the future, we have more business space in Oregon to provide and make available for places. But, that was it.
All right, any other discussion? So, we got them, yeah?
We have to approve.
Oh, I think we have it on already.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, we got the, anybody else discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post.
Thanks, everybody.
Yep.
Thank you.
Then we'll go to A2, which is extraterritorial certified survey map prepared by Sunset Hideaway Acres LLC, creating two lots at 1161 Highway 14 in the town of Rutland. This too came before the Plan Commission and Martin, make sure I'm not saying this right, but basically, we are not taking any action. I mean, we're going to approve, we're approving to take no, to not object.
No, you're approving the extraterritorial CSM.
Okay, so this was not, I'm confused on something else, I thought it was, we weren't taking...
It's the, the related rezoning and that we don't have jurisdiction.
Got it, okay.
But the CSM.
There was another piece, okay. All right. Anybody want to make a motion? Second? Yeah, Amanda?
I'll move.
Okay, second? Jenna? Mike, you look like you're ready to, like, okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, okay. All right, we'll go to 7B, which is Public Safety Committee. One is ordinance number 2302. Ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Village of Oregon. Code of Ordinance is relating to the issuance of alcohol beverage operator's license. And Jenna's going to start us off as the chair of the committee.
Trying to scroll to the right.
Oh.
We're having some technology problems, I apologize to everybody. All right, so, in the packet you'll have a good memo from Attorney Derek Punches, who has been helping us, and Matt, also looking at my memo, helping us with this process. So, over the years, we've had different, a variety of ways that we've been doing operator's licenses for alcohol beverages, so this is the fruit of those discussions. And I'll let Derek kind of go through the two different agenda items that we have in more detail. It'll be better out there.
Sure, and I know most of you, but for those who I haven't met, I'm Derek Punches. I'm an attorney with Stafford Rosenbaum, who along with Village Attorney Matt Dragney, provides legal counsel to the village. As Jenna noted, we've worked extensively over the last couple of months to develop a first understanding of what the state law requires in terms of the issuance of alcohol beverage operator's licenses, and then to talk about what are some potential alternatives that the village could consider in lieu of the current procedure. We talked about how, first a little bit of background, those who don't know, operator's license are simply bartender's license. They authorize a person to provide alcohol beverages outside of supervision by the licensee of an establishment. So, they can typically provide, serve alcohol beverages to other people when no one else is present, and they can also supervise people who don't otherwise have an operator's license. Under state law, you have to have an operator's license, you have to be certified by the municipality, and the municipality has to provide a license to all the people who are qualified under state law. This is typically a fairly rote procedure, except for, the statutes require that those who have an arrest and conviction record are not qualified. Simultaneously, the statutes say that somebody who is either a habitual law offender or who has an unpardon felony is unqualified to hold an operator's license. So, we need to deal with it somehow. On top of that, those provisions are subject to state law that say that it is unemployment discrimination to refuse to license someone on account of their arrest and conviction record. So, again, we've got two competing interests that the village has to juggle with. Right now, the applications come in through the village clerk, they're forwarded on to the Public Safety Committee for their review and consideration, and the Public Safety Committee has certain responsibilities that they have to perform in terms of just the practical aspects. And that includes walking through the application, generally with the licensee present, sometimes the licensee is not present. But one of the things that they have to do under the Wisconsin Fair Employment Law is make a determination of whether, if this person has an arrest and conviction record, whether or not any of those arrest and convictions are substantially related to the licensed activity. And this is a very fact-specific finding, it's going to entail some back and forth generally with the applicant. On top of that, the state law requires the applicant have the opportunity to present evidence of rehabilitation, to say that, notwithstanding the fact that I have these arrest and convictions on my record, but certain other factors perhaps mitigate that offense in some way. Perhaps I was young at the time, perhaps it was 10 years ago, and so they have the opportunity to present that information. The, upon a finding of that the activity, the conviction is substantially related to the licensed activity, and that the person has not presented evidence of rehabilitation, the committee would make a finding and a recommendation to the Village Board to approve or deny that license, and that's the current process as it is now. That entails some, two particular concerns that we've identified. One, practical aspects in terms of, when the statutes require that certain actions be done by the municipality, there's a question about whether or not those have to be done by the Village Board, or whether they can be delegated down to the committee level. And right now, they're done by the committee level and simply accepted upon recommendation of the, by the Village Board. The other aspect of this is a little bit more practical, and it says, does it make sense for the village to go through this process whereby the application is reviewed, the offenses are determined whether or not substantially related, and then there's evidence rehabilitation taken? Does it make sense to do this at both the committee level and the Village Board level, or is there a way that we can make this a little bit more efficient in terms of delegating that responsibility to a single official? And, or in this case, the committee? And so, after considering both of those, the village, I'm sorry, the Public Safety Committee recommended that the procedure be changed from Village Board approval to simply committee approval, and that's the ordinance itself. The, Jenna, would you like me to speak about the policy right now as well?
Let's stick to just the, well, it's kind of hard to not explain one without the other, so, maybe, yeah, the high level, and then we can go into a little bit more detail when we get to the next one. Matt?
Can I just, for emphasis?
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of information there. The key point to take away from what Derek is describing is that the current policy requires the Public Safety Committee to first conduct a hearing and make a decision and then make a recommendation to the Village Board. And that puts us in a position where then we may have to do the same thing twice, or at least something twice, because the Public Safety Committee is acting in an advisory capacity. It's not making the decision, it's making a recommendation. So, the policy change here would be to say, Public Safety Committee's decision would be the final decision, subject to certain appeal rights, but it wouldn't be just recommendation to the Village Board, it would be, that would be the decision. And, so that's, in addition to what Derek mentioned in terms of efficiency, other factors that were considered in making that recommendation include, from my standpoint at least, there's some uncertainty about, you know, if we stay with the current process, and we have the Public Safety Committee conduct a hearing, hear from the applicant, make findings and then recommendations, what do you need to do at the Village Board meeting? Is it enough to simply, is it legally sufficient for you to simply look at the minutes of the Public Safety Committee meeting and then adopt a motion to approve or deny? Or is a more extensive hearing required at the Village Board? And frankly, I'm not sure how to answer that. And so, in my mind, it makes sense for the body that conducts the hearing, that takes the evidence, that hears directly from the applicant, that spends an hour and a half trying to figure out what to do, it makes sense for that to be the decision rather than to then go to the Village Board, which reads the minutes, but really only scratches the surface in terms of the amount of time and effort that's spent understanding the situation. To me, it makes sense, you know, pick one body to make the decision, Public Safety Committee or Village Board, and let that body do the work, rather than what we have now, which is, we have two separate groups who are involved in the process, and it's, you know, so, sorry, I just wanted to emphasize that.
No, and I think, I'll add as well, that at the committee level, one of the things we also talked about is, you know, having this dual approval process type situation, where also the people who are coming before us, who are, were making them explain arguably the worst day that they've had yet, all that detail at the committee level, and we are asking questions going back and forth, you know, what happened, what was the scenario that led to this, how have we, has it been remedied, whatnot, then essentially having them potentially have to do that again at full Village Board on ITV. And I mean, committee meetings are public as well, but I think for a lot of folks who come before us, it feels a little different to be at the committee hearing and sharing this very personal stuff than when you're coming before the full Village Board and sharing it, so that was part of the consideration.
And I just wanted to add too, that other municipalities have done this, you know, they delegate this responsibility. I think Madison has their own alcohol.
ALRC?
Yes. So, this isn't a crazy idea, this is something that other municipalities have done also.
All right. Thank you for that slide. Sorry. No, 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 we all kind of appreciate that. All right, so.
And I will just note, because I think it is confusing, but I believe in the packet there was included two flow charts that describe both the current process for the issuance of these licenses, as well as what the new proposed process is. And there it is. Sometimes it's helpful to see this sort of step-by-step, how this is going to play out. And to that end, the committee also recommended adoption of a policy by the village that does two important things, and one is that it lays out each of these steps in greater detail than just the flow chart does, and actually walks through, because as we know, the village clerk may one day change, the committee membership changes, and it's helpful to delineate each of these steps along the way and say, who's responsible for what, at which stage in the game. The second important part of this, and I think this is the most pragmatic portion of all, is, like we talked about before, the village can only consider those things that are substantially related to licensed activity under state law. So, one of the questions that the committee had when it came before us, is there a way to limit the information that comes before us in the first place? Things that we don't want to see, or that we shouldn't see at all? Because if we walk through the process, once the village clerk receives an application for an operator's license, the village clerk sends it off to the police department for a background check. That's the only way that we can know whether or not a person has an arrest and conviction record. When the chief puts together that background report, everything's going to be included. Everything under the sun that the chief can find or that's identified on the applications, on the application itself, is going to be included and be forwarded back on to the committee, and then they're going to consider each of those things, if any, that are on that application or on that background report. So, the idea behind the policy is that, is there some way that we can create a funnel of sorts to limit the type of information that's coming to us? There are certain things we know we probably want to see, serious offenses, things that are related to alcohol violations, but there's probably a lot that the committee never needs to see at all, that are probably never going to be substantially related. And so, Section 2 of the policy actually lays out a couple of these things that we're going to exclude from that policy.
Keep going, Lauren. A little bit more. We're going to go to the policy.
Okay.
There you go.
There we go. So, for example, we don't need to go through every one of these, but for example, under 2B1, the background report is going to exclude the applicant's arrest record history, because under state law, you cannot consider anything, any prior arrests, unless it's for a prior criminal charge, or a pending criminal charge for an exempt offense, which are very, fairly serious criminal offenses. But by and large, people are innocent until proven guilty, so even if they have a pending OWI charge, that's not something that the village can consider until they've actually resulted in a conviction. If it results in a conviction, then it would proceed underneath a different portion of the policy. One of the more interesting parts that the committee also considers was to say that, as a policy decision, if a person has not more than one non-felony offense within the last five years, then we don't care about the prior offenses, because if something occurred more than 10 years ago, and we simply don't think it's going to weigh heavily enough on our mind to decline or to deny a person an operator's license. And again, proceeding through three, four, five, these are additional policy decisions to say that these are items that the committee found were unlikely to be held for, are unlikely to be substantially related to licensed activity, and thus are things that the committee should not consider, should not be before the committee, and primarily because they are both likely to waste time and also perhaps bias the committee's decision-making process.
And if it's not already clear, I mean, the way that this is supposed to work is that the police department that does the background investigation and then prepares a report should follow this policy and only include those matters that should be included based on this policy. And so, as Derek said, if someone has a, if the only thing, if the only thing that shows up on a person's arrest and conviction record is something that would be excluded under this policy, then it would just go back to the clerk, and the clerk wouldn't even send it to the committee, the clerk would simply issue the license, because there's really nothing for the committee to do. The committee would only have to see those cases where there's an actual history that requires evaluation beyond what the policy already does.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
All right.
I had one, I touched on this, Derek, I think. An appeal process remains in place, even if they, if it's turned down at Public Works, then they can come, what, to the Village Board and even further? How does that work?
So, that's a great question. And underneath the policy, it actually lays out under Section, I'm going to go, Section 5, the appeals process. And so, this, again, under the proposed process, this is going to look, Chapter 68 of the statutes provides an administrative appeal process. That appeals process that's, under state law, is going to apply anywhere the village hasn't adopted a different appeals process. In this case, the village doesn't have an appeals process on the books that deals with this. And so, by, the policy itself references what the timelines are going to be under that Chapter 68 statutory process right now. And so, what that would look like is that the appeal is going to be first made, there's going to be a decision made by the committee, and appeal would be made to the committee itself for a review of that determination, and then upon a written decision following that, then the person can appeal to Circuit Court essentially.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you say the Circuit Court?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the initial appeal to the committee, the person who wants to appeal the initial determination would have to say, explain to the committee or say, you know, I want you to reconsider your decision, and specifically, here's where I think you made a mistake.
Right.
In this process. The committee could then look at that, and if the committee agrees, we made a mistake, the committee can correct it. If the committee does not agree, then it would make another, you know, reaffirm its decision essentially, and then, yeah, then the next step is a Circuit Court. If the board wants to develop a different administrative procedure or appeals process for this or other things, we could talk about this, but we're basically using what's currently available to us under state law and existing village ordinances to delineate the appeals process. By the way, that's the process we have today, is committee makes the recommendation, it goes to Village Board, Village Board makes final decision, if the person doesn't like it, they go back to the Village Board and say, you made a mistake, I want you to reconsider. And if the Village Board makes the same decision, then the person can go to Circuit Court. So, we're saying it's really the same process, except you don't have to go to the Village Board along the way, but the appeal process is still to a Circuit Court if you don't like your final decision at the village.
Thank you.
Do you have questions?
I just have a question about this Appendix A. So, these are exempt offenses, meaning they're, even though they are not alcohol-related offenses, they're still, these are absolutely considered, yeah, okay. Just want to, exempt and...
Just to clarify.
Exempt from what? Yeah.
Right. So, again, if you have a pending criminal charge, you can only consider those, the village can only consider those charges if it's on this list of exempt offenses. It's exempt from the discrimination law, basically.
Got it.
If you have, if you have a pending charge for a misdemeanor, or a local ordinance violation, that's not going to be something you can consider, it's only going to be one of these that are listed on Appendix A.
Thank you. So, go ahead.
Yeah, so, if someone had a violation, I'm just, I'm on the Public Safety Committee and I still have a question, but if somebody had a violation of the social host ordinance for providing minors alcohol, we would see that, right? Because it's alcohol-related?
A conviction?
A conviction.
Well, we don't have the social host ordinance anymore, but there is still a state statute that is in place.
That state.
And just to add, because that is a violation under Chapter 125, which is one of the things that we, that the committee did include, it's under item B2, so that's something that we would still see, because it's a violation, it is an alcohol-related violation.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, thanks.
And I would just like to say that that is a small example of the kind of discussions that we've been having in relationship to operator's licenses, because, you know, we're not attorneys and thankful for Derek and Matt, but there's a lot of explaining, you know, what is legally substantially related, sometime, or, you know, in previous administrations, we would get lots of information that we weren't necessarily allowed to consider, and so then you're digging through that, and this is to kind of make sure that we're a little bit more efficient in our time, so that the discussions that we have, however lengthy they may be, are actually about the person that we're looking at giving an operator's license to, and less about the law and what... license to, and less about the law, and what, and understanding what the parameters are that we can give that license for. Yes.
So I see this as a couple of things. It's empowering committees, and as the village grows, and there are more and more and more things that we're dealing with at the board, I think having committees that are empowered to make decisions, and then if there's something that we run up against that is a problem with that, then we fix it, but I think empowering committees to do this with really clear guidelines makes a lot of sense, and it makes things more efficient for the board, so thank you, I think it's a great step in the right direction.
You want to go, Jenna?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. All right, so, we'll need a motion for the first, Derek and Mike, okay? This is for amending chapter 12 of Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances relating to alcohol operator license. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you all. And then, so the second is the policy regarding to issuing of operator's licenses. Okay, Derek, again, Amanda, all right, Derek and Amanda. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jenna.
You guys are leading, that you are the forefront of administering, can you believe how difficult it is to deal with an alcohol beverage operator's license?
Yeah, I think this is our shortest discussion on the topic.
It is.
Twenty seventeen, I first got on the board.
I do, I do just want to say that I give the public safety committee a lot of credit for sorting out through some of these long meetings, and Derek especially. And Matt.
Yeah, well, Derek, Matt, and Chief really.
And, yeah.
Really helped us iron that out, so thank you all.
All right. Let's go to eight, which is unfinished business, items offered discussion, possible action. And eight, A and B, Martin has asked that we table this, because Elise could not attend tonight, so are we okay with that? Okay? Then let's go to nine, which is new business, items offered discussion, possible action.
No, I had eight B was.
What?
We can cover that one tonight.
Oh, you want to do that one?
Yeah, eight A was just the one.
All right, just eight A, okay, so, eight B is review resolution of, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, it was just a, review resolution of the police commissioner rules, goals identified, and village board's strategic plan. So, we won't table that one, that's the one we want to discuss. Martin?
Yeah, so I had a memo in the packet, if we had a chance to read it, I won't belabor going over it unless you want me to, but essentially, well, some of the work that we did last year on chapter one and two of the village code, this topic, this item that we had previously discussed back when we did our strategic plan, is effectively resolved. There really isn't any more that the village board can do in this area, or has jurisdiction within, and so I wanted to address that and make sure that we're all on the same page, and if there's any questions, I can answer them.
All right. So, resolved. Yep. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. All right, now we can go to nine, new business, items offered discussion, possible action. A, nine A, eliminating the police secretary position, reclassifying Amanda.
Just before.
Oh, did you have a comment? Okay.
Just on nine A here, I'm going to abstain from this because I am in fact related to Mandy.
Okay, all right. Eliminating the police secretary position, reclassifying Amanda Stack to the police clerk position and placement at step eight of the employee compensation plan. Staff is recommending that we approve as presented. Chief, do you need to say anything on this?
Yeah, just real briefly, I know Martin's got a memo in here to, so, after the salary study, we noticed a pretty unique discrepancy between two of our clerical positions at the Oregon Police Department, and literally their job descriptions are identical outside of the titles being different. So, and the difference between the two is literally three months of employment with the village, so, we tried to kind of seize the moment here. Officer Ruckti, she left outside of her three-year commitment, which required her to pay back the village $3,000. So, we're going to take that money, our idea is to take that money in this memo and push it towards getting Amanda up to what the other clerical position is making. We'll still have a little bit of the negative, but we'll absorb that ourselves, but that would get her up to the hourly rate of the other clerical position, and then we would work forward through future budgets to maintain that.
Okay. All right, can we get a motion in a second, we'll have discussion, I saw Phil's hand and Carleen, any discussion? Anybody?
Good catch, yeah. Yeah. Glad we got you in.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I have BLO abstaining.
Yes.
Thank you.
Derek abstained. All right, B is proposal for computer software and conversion services with Civic Systems LLC related to village accounting and payroll software. The motion is to approve as presented. Do, all right, Candy?
Well, I, we have a.
There's a memo, yep.
Yeah, we have a memo in the packet, but I do want to say that I actually spoke with trustee Wunsch this afternoon, and he's a computer guy.
Technicolor.
It's the technicolor. So, if you are in agreement to approve this, I'm actually going, I'm working on some of the language for the hosting agreement, or the hosting amendment, so if you would be willing to authorize me to finalize that with Mike, I would be in favor of that.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
Do we need an amendment to make that?
You can make it part of the motion.
Yeah, go ahead, Carleen.
Okay, I would make the motion to authorize Candy with, in consultation with Mike, trustee Mike Wunsch, to complete this agreement with Civic Systems LLC for computer software and conversion services for the village.
Perfect.
Okay, can we get a second?
You've got all that right.
Jenna, okay? Any discussion? Yeah, Phil?
Being double advocate, what if there's a disagreement between the computer guy, trustee Wunsch, and Civic Systems?
We'll bring it back here. We'll bring it back here.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Just for clarification, this related to service-level arguments and security things being written into the contract.
I understand that, and that's exactly why I asked.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. C is future agenda items, this item gives the board members opportunity to place items and new business on a future agenda for discussion. Anyone want to speak up?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, this is not necessarily for a future agenda item, but it's just to let everyone know that staff, board members, committee members who enrolled in the Black History for a New Day class, those will begin, the class actually started already, but our participation will begin the end of the 27th, and thank you Candy for all your work in putting together groups and making sure that we're meeting and accommodating people's schedules, and facilitators are members of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Two of us have been trained, and there'll be a further training just for folks' information on Wednesday to bring everybody up to speed so that we're ready to start on time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, go to 10, report of village officers, 10A is village administrator's report, which was in our packet. 10B, village department head, staff, or consultant comments, anybody have anything? Not seen any heads, nod, or, how about C, village board comments, anybody? Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick transportation committee update that we met last week, sorry, keeping track of my days is difficult, and we decided that, we looked at all the survey data, and we need some guidance as to how to interpret and where to go with it, so we're reaching out to Ben Lyman from the Greater Madison MPO, and we'll get some input there, so we're in the process of going through it.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, Mike?
The sustainability survey's up and running, and encourage any viewers to please log in and take the survey.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll go to 11, anonymous miscellaneous business, 11A is upcoming meetings and events, that was all in our packet, and we're at, we're at 12, adjournment. Amanda? And Jenna? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.
Wow.
That may be your fastest meeting ever.
That's a good one, yeah.
Not quite.